Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we need to go through and approve the minutes for January.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for January.
All in favor? Okay. We need to approve the bills for February.
I make a motion to approve the bills for February.
All in favor? Alright, I'm glad this happened. We need to open a budget hearing.
For garbage rate increase. I did a little chart so you can see what the monthly bill is currently. And then if the... So currently what we bring in, we have 174 cans out, how we charge, and you can see how they charge on the bill. They give us two prices, the second can's only 10.05. So if we raise it to 18.68, which is a dollar increase, what we would bring in? 32.50? And if you did $2, 34.24. Or, yeah, 34.24. We need to cover 30.23.
How much did PSI raise you here recently?
It went from, what was it? 17.55 is I think, so I think it was just a dollar, basically.
Maybe it wasn't quite a dollar last year, was it?
Yeah, maybe it wasn't quite a dollar this year. And I have to put it in an older bill.
Yeah, as opposed to the dollar?
Yeah.
It was really close.
So those who are behind them, the bills and stuff, how is the city sitting on that, budget-wise?
Like I said, there's always people behind. I can tell you like what they left to be. I think we pull in enough right now that's covering our monthly bill for garbage. And when I get a payment that's not a whole amount, I do break it down by percentage, so everything gets covered a little bit.
Any other comments?
What, how much, I know I asked this before, but I can't remember what you said. How much of a cushion do we have in garbage and how much do we need?
It's not big, I mean...
Do we foresee needing a cushion?
I don't think, I mean, that's my personal opinion. I don't think we need to, like, we're not servicing a truck. It's just kind of, people were late, maybe there's a little cushion there. And I think you kind of have that built in because we charge, right now, at 17.68 each can. Where like, theirs was 17 whatever, and then 10.05. The 10.05 didn't change. So their second can is like $7 less.
So we're making $7 on extra cans?
On extra cans. And that kind of helps buffer those late people. So, I mean...
So we're still...
Yeah, okay, I mean, we're covering ourselves.
Well, we don't have a buffer if, let's say, we, the city needs to call, get a dumpster for something that happened and we need to clean up a bunch of crap or something.
I don't... I mean, I guess I don't know where you'd put that. To me, this is different than that.
Me, garbage is garbage.
Yeah. You're right, but...
If you want to help the city get another garbage can.
Yeah. I'll use mine once a month. So I'm helping.
Some weeks I get it. That's true with your shopping party.
So your minutes are clear, while Robin's giving the presentation?
I think so.
Yeah, so that was your public meeting.
Are there any, any public comments?
That was, that was mine, should've asked him.
Okay. I guess we'll close our budget hearing. Alright, we'll move forward.
So can we decide on it?
Yeah, this is not a chance you gotta do on it. So, I mean, obviously, I mean, you gotta raise it, that's just a question of...
Right, you want a $1 or $2?
I think we better send up $1.
I think $1 fine if we're doing fine and we don't see, foresee any issues.
So the garbage company does report, who's that, or who wants that for day? Come to you to get a second can and you deal with the garbage company for getting that second can for them. Yeah, so, alright, so it's, so, yeah.
Yeah, and they don't charge us, like, if we have broken cans or anything, like, they can see all that cost.
Yeah, there doesn't need to be like a big buffer for anything. They just bill us and we pay the bill.
Yeah, they cover all the costs of the can, so if we need more cans, they bring us more cans, and we pick up the broken ones. That's all part of their initial cost.
Okay, Mountain West contract.
Somebody's got a motion. I make a motion, we need to raise the garbage cost by a dollar.
A dollar?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Then we need to do a...
Roll a call, one.
No, but we'll have to have a resolution for that. If you know the number of the motion to approve the resolution to evidence a $1 increase, we're gonna have to wait next month.
Yeah, I didn't write one up.
You know what the number would be?
I don't, off the top of my head, I can look.
Just bill, so do a motion to approve a resolution, increasing your garbage fees by $1.
Okay.
And then you can fill in the number.
So we'll do that next month?
Well, we can just do it right now, then we don't have to wait for next month.
Motion to approve the resolution.
I do a motion to approve the resolution by $1.
I second it.
All in favor? Okay.
Then I'll email you one up and we have your book.
I have one written that we've done in the past, but I can't edit.
If you want, you can do it.
I can do it. I was gonna do that today, actually.
Make him burn his money.
Just real quick.
Put it on your list.
I'll do it, I can do it. Take about four minutes, those are simple.
Mountain West contract, so they made some changes here, want to explain that?
Brian.
Oh, Brian, you want to explain that?
Well, they've got some new heads, they're, they're changing, the company, the company's getting bigger, so they're actually starting to do some work, besides just water, they're doing like mechanical work and repair work. So they've hired new people. There's a whole lot of new tests that are required now for our water. And so, our water and sewer, I think they raised, the sewer went up $20 per month, and our water went up $15 per month. And that'll cover the standard tests, water tests. It's not a big increase, but it's...
But the guy said if you want him to come talk about the contract, can, or if we just want to sign it?
I personally don't think it's a real big deal, it's, the contract, I went over it, it looks the same as what we've had in the past. Some things they did add to this contract is if we do sign this contract, they give us allowances on repair costs. So they'll, depending on how much we spend on, if we hire them to do repairs, then they'll give us a discount on, on our parts. Depending on the... It was, it was broke down, so the less we spend on parts, the higher percentage they mark up the parts. But, so like a $5,000 or more part, it could be like a 50% increase in the price mark up. Versus like a 40% increase. So they do give us a little bit of a break on parts if we use them for our hardware repairs.
Okay.
And I, I'm not opposed to it, and I, I've actually got them...
Last year.
Yeah, I've, I've actually got them quoting, putting in the flow we're in right now at the moment, so... And that would, that would be above the $5,000 mark, so we'd get like, instead of a 40, a 40% increase in our markup on parts, it'd be a 15% increase. Like I say, the rest of the, the rest of the contract looks identical to the past ones, they've just raised it a little bit. Obviously, the costs have gone up a little bit this year, so it's just like anything else.
About a maintenance report?
On, on, so first, yeah.
On the contract, let's...
So, I'm sorry, Brian, I know I've asked this before, but what do they do for us again? They test our water and do, what else do they do?
They hold our license.
Yeah.
What license?
The license would mean to manage the water and sewer. Because I don't have a license.
Oh, okay.
And so they hold the license and basically, they're my boss.
Like, we basically still have to keep them around for right now.
Right.
Yeah, I was just curious what they did, because I didn't know what they did.
Yeah, so, I mean, they haven't been a, and the way that this is scaled is basically I do all the work and I report to them. If I'm doing anything that's major, I have to let them know and so that they can...
So they're kind of just watching out for our water?
Right, right, right. So that, I'm not pulling stupid over there. That's how it's supposed to work. And they're supposed to check on me monthly to make sure that I'm doing what they say I should be doing. I mean, to give us pointers, and like I say, the biggest thing right now is they're taking all of our water samples.
Okay, thank you.
And there are, we're coming, just side note, and it doesn't, it's not, it does say on the contract, there are some additional water tests that are coming up this year that I haven't, what? I didn't know they were coming, they're very expensive. That's the copper and lead ones, there's some others, or they're expensive, apparently. They're like $1,000 a test.
Is that a monthly, or yearly, or quarterly?
These surprise ones, they're gonna be like every five years? Every five years, every eight years? They're gonna try and work this better in the coming ones? So that they're not all due this year?
So we're just being curious.
Water, sewer operations.
Because they are, like, some of those tests are $1,000, three of those tests. I'm not a scientist, so I don't know what involves all those tests, but apparently it costs a couple dollars.
Talking down to my level now, like, there's questions, because before it was like, I had them on...
The cost from the old one to the new one, you said it was about 20%?
$20.
Oh.
$20 on water and $15 on...
What was the old ones' cost?
I'd have to look at your numbers again. If you, if you look at the...
Right now, we pay $210 to water, $185 for sewer.
So it's 225?
No, how does this, how does this affect when we have to put water to the earth?
It doesn't.
That doesn't.
That's just extra.
That, that's part of their contract is to, I, when I say it's time to, to release sewage to the earth, I just have to let them know. It all has to just, part of their documentation. So that's, I have to let them know and obviously I have to let Earth know. Before I flood. But, yeah, so it, like I say, the increase isn't, isn't that big, it didn't seem like a big deal to me. Because it seems...
Because we kind of have to have it.
Well, yeah, and to just jump 15 bucks on one and 20 on the other, that's, that's not bad, you know? I know things are going up everywhere, so it's, I think it's comparative to a dollar increase on garbage.
And it's got a 30-day out, when you're not stuck for a long term. Sometimes it goes screwy, you give them 30 days notice and you have to switch.
Yeah.
You're never stuck for a long time.
So do we just have to vote to sign the contract?
Just a motion to approve and...
A motion to approve the contract?
My second.
All in favor? Okay. About a maintenance report, we talked about the Ocean Road and all that funness.
Well... The mayor and Robin and I, I've got some pictures here you can take a look at. We went to an LTAC meeting down the Blackfoot. Weeks ago. Learned a few things. Like a little hotter than my collar. It does appear that there was some kind of a lawsuit in northern Idaho. That their civil lawyer has recommended that any road that borders city property becomes city responsibility. So those pictures there, that's some of the complaints that they have about Ocean Road.
It's complaints of county complaints.
County.
County says they want us to fix the problems on Ocean Road for half a mile, basically.
So it basically goes from the, if I look at the, their ITV maps, technically, that top bridge, right by Anne Waters', Zach's place, technically, that's in our city boundaries. But it goes from that top bridge, just in the outskirts of town over here. 700 east is our boundary. So those are some of the issues that we're gonna be facing on Ocean Road if, if they really do enforce that, and I don't know...
Wouldn't cut the burrow pits back?
Yes, we need to.
Like they used to be?
The thing is, is we'll come out and dug the lines.
It was, it was, yes. Unfortunately, they put it back exactly how it was.
Yeah, but they don't know that. We should ask Intermountain because they did bury it, and some of it is above road grade, and so it forces the water into the road. And so somehow, maybe we ought to take care of it or work with them to take care of it, but it's a substantial amount of water in the road. The problem is, when it's on top of the road, it goes underneath the road also, and then that causes a breakup.
So that, that brings up some other issues, and like, you live on that road. Technically, there are burrow pits, those right, right ways, where you've just put all that nice ground. Technically, it's supposed to slope away from the road. It can't be leveled with or above the roadway.
I think we're still under though, because we almost...
Yours actually isn't too bad, if you look at the pictures, it goes more towards across the street from you.
I was gonna say, I don't see, it's my driveway.
But like April Christiansen, she filled in all the burrow pits on the other side and planted grass and put sprinklers in. I'm gonna have to get the county involved and maybe see what they recommend. But I, I still am, we're curious if you could find that lawsuit or talk to their civil lawyer?
No, that's been a long time, that's been true for a long time, like we talked last month, it's, it's, you don't, you can't split a road in half, right? So you take it off or you don't take it, you know, that is, yeah, I, I agree, that's going to be your road. But like we talked last month, the county can't force you to spend money you don't have. So you do the maintenance that you can afford to do, or you get LTAC grant, or you get county to do a, you know, shared maintenance agreement, or something, so... They can't force you to spend money you don't have, right? That's your own jurisdiction.
So I do have a question, and I've been bugging you a lot, so how does that not affect the state highways?
Well, so all your state highways have shared maintenance agreements with whatever jurisdiction they're dealing with. So like even in Blackfoot, you know, the highway that everyone has a business loop, project team, well, they have the agreement of who's doing what, because that's a state-controlled roadway, but it runs through the city, and so, you know, they, they put those agreements together. So if the county's wanting stuff done that you can't afford, you say, great, help us. You know, you can do a shared maintenance if you're there, we're LTAC, and, you know, provide the grant money. So like I say, it's, you do what's in your budget and what you can, and you make them have help with the rest of it. Rather than you say, okay, county, we're gonna, we're gonna do the gravel road.
I have been taking some...
Yeah, we've mentioned that.
Dusty doesn't want to help at all, really. Well, he basically wants me to go out and source my materials and...
And you say, Dusty, we don't have the money. So we're gonna do this this year, we're gonna do this next, and if you want more done, get your group out here and help.
But I have noticed, and I've been watching, they fixed the puddles, and they're also the ones that are plowing. So I, I don't know, they want me to take care of the road and then do all the...
Stop them doing that too, so we don't want...
I don't want to complain.
The problem is, and this, this will be true forever, and it's been true for a long time, the county forgets that you guys all pay county taxes too. And so none of your county taxes that you're paying is coming back to help the city of Bayso, right? They forget that. You look at your tax bill, you're paying just as much in county taxes as you are anybody else, and the county commissioners, and they all forget that. So push comes to shove, no county, you come help, we have this much budget, and that's all we can do.
So I have a question, how far off the road does the burrow pit have to be? Because would that put those gas lines in the way?
I'll have to look at that road, but yeah, all of that that they dug up, that's all right away. So I, I'm not for sure how wide those roads are. The road's here, it's 30 feet from the center. So with Ocean Road, I'm not for sure if that's a 60-foot roadway or not. There's a good chance it's at least 60, so if you walked out to the center and measured 30 feet over...
So whose decision is it ultimately to decide to help?
On the county, so what's a burrow pit? I mean, well, it starts with Dusty. If push comes to shove, it would be a county commissioner.
It's a relief to decide.
Drew Jensen, Drew Jensen in here and say, hey, here's the problem. This is our budget, this is what we can do. So, so they, they can't pull you into it.
I mean, you said you'd see property.
Yeah, well, one isn't necessarily...
That's within the range. Should be enough. So like, technically, like where all your driveway is, it's within the city, all of that that attaches to 30 feet from the center of the road over towards your property, that doesn't have a drainage. I know I was, I'm sorry.
We're taking it as...
You're doing fine, and you've done more, take, take care of that property over there than a lot of people, so I'm not... It's just, it is, there's other problems that's gonna make that, that's gonna raise that issue, so...
We're putting a drainage, on the other side, we put it into the yard, so...
That's fine, I mean, and you're easygoing about it, and I appreciate that, and I know...
We're gonna take the blacktop out.
Because, because it technically, it, there's a whole bunch of problems.
I can have the driveway, but I can't fill the burrow pit.
Because it, when it runs off and wanes, it runs over and puddles on top of the banhole, which drains all of this melted snow down into, into our sewer.
So you're filling the ponds for us?
I've been moving it.
So he's actually been doing a good job, so it's okay.
Pushing up water in the yard.
So yeah, when, when you start going around town, when you start seeing, everybody's built up their drainage ways, burrow pits, and built them up in landscape, which is fine, they're taking care of them, but that creates a problem, there's no drainage for water, so... It's the same problem we have on Ocean Road, we have the same problem within the city, so those are some things that will... And I did, I, down here at Trent's, right at the, at the end of this, I was out there earlier, and even though it was a little froze, and the top was muddy, I did move some of the dirt, and it helped. So once the soil gets a little easier to push around, I can get rid of some of that. Some of those areas, I may just have to put some asphalt in.
First grader to come up and double cut an edge.
And we'll, we will have to be careful a little bit, because some of those, I think there's some pole lights that are pulling under there about like...
If you go down about that far, under, under 10 inches, you should be good. Pole lights should be two foot, gas should be five. With the high pressure, it should be five feet.
That is mostly correct, except for your house.
I know, I know.
Low pressure, you're 18 to 20 inches.
It's only 48 inches at her house, because they rock you. They went around a ledge, big bulls are running around. Yeah, it's funny, because even our engineering drawings show it.
Yeah, I, we didn't do that, we moved it.
The gasket.
That's our whole house. Our walls, everything.
Yeah, so those are some upcoming things, maintenance-wise.
So I think we probably ought to write a letter to the people along the road out there, explain what was this. Because they may come back like maybe Tom, and want to fill that back up.
How does that affect the people on the other side of the road?
Yeah, yeah, so April and Kevin, I will have to go and visit with... Yeah, we will have to talk to April and say, we gotta have drainage.
It looks pretty.
It looks nice, but you have to take some of it out for drainage. But, tractors up and running.
Ready for snow.
It's ready for snow. I, I did, when I was, I think, when I was over there in that ice over at Trent's, I did, I did break a pin that I discover is yesterday, the only way to get to it. So yesterday, I completely tore the plow apart and replaced it.
Hey, you're getting good at it.
I'm getting good at it.
Every other week.
So... I do have, I've had some, Alan's been doing some work on heaters. I know our wellhouse doesn't have a running heater. We've had a couple electric heaters and a, and a buddy heater going over there, but we're keeping, we're keeping it about freezing.
We got, our partners came in today, so... That's an ongoing...
That's a problem that we didn't, I didn't know was happening. That should have happened a long time ago, that's what I'm saying.
But he found out the other heater is not working.
Yeah, I tried to turn the one on the other side of the building down to help heat the buildings, it's not functioning now either, so...
See, but that's probably not running since the lightning strike.
Probably not, so it's probably got the same...
Same issue.
Same issue, so...
And it could be as simple as your transformer's burned. So, yeah, we'll look at it in the morning.
So we're, we're working on it. Spending money.
It's only money, you can't do...
You approve them, so, thank you.
Okay. Can I ask a random question, it's not on here? So, and I don't know where to find the answers, that's why I'm bringing it to you guys. So I have somebody in the town who's, when they're... So I have somebody in the town who's, when there are water in the ditch, they're not getting any water because somebody's blocked it off up ahead, like further down from them. Who do they talk to?
So everybody, like, what do you mean, like in the neighborhood?
Yeah.
So you have to talk to the whole people that live along that ditch to figure out what's going on. So that brings up a point, Ron Barrows is over at my house the other day. And he says when down the line, somebody blocks the ditch from his house, the water level comes out of the ditch and goes right into the sewer there. That needs to be fixed.
Isn't the Senate.
It goes, he says it's a substantial amount of water that goes down into the sewer.
Right there in front of his house.
Well, what happens is somebody's gonna pull the head gate. So it starts backing up in my yard, so I go up and pull the head gate and she's turned it down the other way, because somebody is stopping it right there, and I'm like, you're not flooding me out.
Guy has had that problem all summer long, he was fighting. What's, what's somebody doing is they're turning the head gate down here in the canal all the way on to get the waters there as fast as possible. But once that ditch is full, wherever they're at can't handle the load that, that is pumping to them.
So they need to.
So Guy's been watching it all summer and trying to go down there and regulate it for whoever it is.
The ditch is in horrible shape. It needs cleaned and unfortunately, everybody that gets water, everybody where the ditch goes through their yard is responsible for the maintenance of the ditch.
Yeah, it's something, they used to get water and then all of a sudden, somebody's done something up the line.
Maybe we can make a community project out of that.
But I don't know on this side of town, I know on that side of town, we had somebody that was in charge of it and they used to have a yearly meeting and got everybody on the ditch lined out when they could have the water and everything. Has it happened for a while, because it was Lou Anne Yelled and she no longer has water.
Probably have to talk to Mike Johnson down here too and figure out that problem, because all along this whole entire property, half the road is flooded. So they probably better figure that out too.
Let's not be, I get plenty of water.
Money report.
I'm the last one.
So I just, I made this, this chart just to update you where we are with funds, where we're sitting, kind of at the end of the quarter. The yellow is the current, the purple was the end of the fiscal year last year. Those are all the usable funds. And then I've asked this question before, but haven't ever really gotten an answer, so I'm gonna ask it again. How much money do you feel like needs to be sitting in our checking account, savings? And at what point do we move it into like the treasure investment?
Maybe it might be better to make the recommendation.
Well, I, Garrett said one time, he sees people have six month, two a year's worth of.
Reserve.
Yeah.
Right, but your state treasure investment is very simple to get back. So I would think it kept two or three months' worth in your checking account and savings account, you know, just there. The rest of it should go in the state investment fund.
Okay.
Because I always mind, I've never done it, I understand you.
Yeah, well, you can just do it online. I, I went through last month and figured all that out.
You may as well be getting that interest income.
Exactly, and I did call and find out how much money do you have to have to start one? Because water doesn't really have anything that way. And he said, nothing to open it, and then you can just start padding. So I think, so I did put savings into the budget, and I think I want to start putting that in the investment.
And so there's no fees or anything taken out of the state treasure investment? I'd do exactly what Garrett said there. Like, but savings can't have increased a lot in paying out.
So to move that, I know you said keep it in the meetings, get, just so that we're all on the same page.
Sign down.
Okay.
When you remove that kind of money, you don't want everybody to know that.
So do we need to have them like sign any?
No, we just. Provide a report like this every month, you know, I mean, that's a great little chart.
It is, it's very nice.
You might even do, you know, maybe a couple more columns to show first quarter, second quarter, third, so you can kind of just track.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna start doing that, yeah.
That's, like I say, it's a great, that's a great monthly thing to show.
Well, we were talking like, some of those, like, even if you.
Because like really, in like your savings account, even on like sewer, there's a hundred and fifty-five thousand there. And you maybe make like a hundred bucks a year. And right now, on the treasure investment for a hundred and thirty-four, monthly, we're getting like five hundred to six hundred on those two accounts each, so, yeah.
I think you should move it over.
Okay.
That's a lot of money just be sitting in savings.
All right, we're all in agreeance then. About that, unless you have any questions? Did you see water funds are growing? We're starting to build up a little? I mean, we, we will have some repairs coming out this summer, so it will probably get used, but.
Well, we're sitting better than we were before.
Yeah. It's in every one of your funds.
So they're gonna be expensive for every one of them to look better.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we would just, and to create one for water would just only help us, so that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments, anybody have anything? Okay. I guess we're done.
One point that I started to talk before, to the rest of you here. There is some neat stuff out there, so you don't actually plow on the road. There are broom attachments that can go on in the front or the back of a tractor, you know, and clean. When I worked construction, we used to use that to clean the highways, then you use mud and everything, you would just take it off. And it wouldn't damage the pavement. However, I know we'd have to get a grant somewhere to buy a piece, to buy one of the powered brooms or something, either go in front of the, of the track, the, uh, track to the city pass, or, um, you know, how do you want, I want to go, back to hook up on the, on the, on any point and then track it up backwards, you know, the, the close snow, but there's no damaging the pavement.
Well, that, that kind of system only works in snow like, like this, it's not gonna work.
Right, right. So things like, like, like now, it's starting to, oh, people around, clear it off, morning, clear it off, afternoon, you know, cover it. It's not building up, and you can keep the streets here somewhat more passable until we get that massive.
Pass right through, I don't know.
It looks like the.
Broken windows.
Yeah, we've used the bird drill before in the springs to throw off rocks and stuff. You do have to be very careful, because it does throw rocks. And once, once up down the road, well, once each direction down the road is a new set of brushes. It's pretty expensive for those brushes. I mean, it's, they're more expensive than our blades. So that, so the cost involved with it, it may not hurt our roads as much, but it will hurt.
People, people that use those, they have like paper driveways or concrete driveways that they don't want to mess up with a blade. They use a sweeper for the snow, but I think for the miles that you run, I, I don't, you'll probably.
Yeah, you've got about five miles worth of road here. And so if, one, one, so that's, so that's ten, if you go one passing direction. And that's what first charges was a set of brushes, because that's about what you would take to clean, to clean our, to clean our road.
So luckily having a construction company, I mean, we were using it three or four times a day for, on a, you know, a couple miles of highway, and we replaced it once a month. So we had, you know, I guess we had better, got better quality brushes than what first was getting using. But, uh, yeah, the thing, what's neat about it too, it's because it's hydraulic controlled, you don't have to have it running, you know? Almost, almost use an old steam engine term that people like to take offense with. But it, it, you can slow it down to just, so you just push it off and just move it a little bit, about throwing it thirty feet. You make, like, just, just push it over, just like a plow, just make a fur on that.
The brushes work different on dirt versus snow.
Yeah.
It probably won't happen anytime soon. But I've thought about getting one for my skid steer for my personal use, and I almost did. But I don't know if it's feasible for a city to do that. Kind of, anything else?
Oh, wait, did you have anything? Or you're just here to?
I'm just here to, um, Husky, you put in the letter of interest for DEQ, just like he does every year, which will score low on it, put off problems.
Yeah.
But it, it was put in, other than I'm just here to be here. Thought it was a great day to drive.
He's talking about for the sewers.
Driving in the snow.
It's a good day for drive. Okay?
Okay, I made a motion to adjourn. My second.
All in favor? Okay, thanks.